I did not do that. Your honorary mayor tonight is Cory Kimbrough, accompanied by her father Kevin. And she is from the number one, or just graduated from the number one elementary school in Westfield, being Kerry Ridge, right? Yeah. So, she has some accomplishments I want her to tell you about, and a little bit about what she's gonna do this summer. Cory?
Um, I have gotten all A's this year in school, and I'm doing a volleyball, tennis, basketball, and golf camps this year for summer.
All A's.
Kevin, you gotta be proud of that. Well done. Well, we're glad to have you. Now, you're gonna conduct the meeting tonight, right? These guys can be rowdy. If they get out of order, you say, "Order in your council." Okay? All right. So, as we do before we open our meeting, we're very honored to have Laura Ballinger here from the Methodist Church to lead us in a word of prayer. Following our standing for that, we will do the pledge of allegiance.
Great. And first of all, I'd like to thank you for the privilege of bringing you the invocation this evening. Would you bow your head in prayer with me, please? Almighty God, we come before you tonight inviting your welcome presence on this assembly of your city leaders. We acknowledge that you have placed them in these positions of leadership so that your will may be done here in Westfield, Indiana. We ask that you grant our leaders here convened much wisdom and guidance in order to make decisions in accordance with your will to the great benefit of your people. We thank you for the many blessings you have so graciously bestowed on us as a city. Truly, your hand is with us. We ask that your divine hand of protection continue to be with our city and our leaders. And we pray that your care, comfort, and healing for the families and loved ones who were so cruelly victimized recently in Orlando, Florida. We ask these things in the powerful name of our Lord, my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, please open your meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Welcome to everyone. The first item on our agenda tonight is we ask for the note of a presence of a quorum, please.
Mark King.
Here.
Jim Aig.
Here.
Bob Horkey.
Here.
Steve Hoover.
Here.
Chuck Lehman.
Here.
Cindy Spojerek.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. For those of you attending, there is a, an agenda at the back of the room. I would note at this time that on page three, an item resolution sixteen dash one-one-seven has been removed, so that's a change in the agenda. Other than that, I believe the agenda stands as presented. So, there we go. At this time, we will consider the approval of our minutes from the meeting of May ninth. Is there a motion on those minutes, please?
So moved.
Second.
So, motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Please note that Mr. Ake abstains. Thank you. At this time, we would welcome anyone, any resident, anyone in attendance that wants to address the council on items that are not on the agenda tonight. Do we have any cards? Does anyone wish to step forward and address the council? Hearing? Seeing none, we will move on. This time, we will consider the approval of the claims. We have a claim docket here. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion for approval? Thank you, Mr. Keen.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Horkey. Okay. Without any comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. At this time, we will have a special presentation, and it will be, I believe, from the Moats group, an update. Who will be doing that, please? Anyone here from the Moats group? Hearing?
They must be busy putting down the dirt round if we get a question.
There you go. There you go. Okay. Okay, if a representative is not here, we will move along. Our first item under our old business tonight is consideration of ordinance sixteen fifteen. This was first introduced on May ninth. It's up for adoption consideration tonight. It is the city of Westfield dealing with some credit card payments. At that time, we had a presentation from Brian covering those details. Are there any questions or comments from the council before we consider that matter? If not, I would entertain a motion, and we could open it up for any final discussion.
Move to approve ordinance sixteen fifteen as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Horkey. Second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ake. Is there any discussion before we call for the question? As mentioned, it was introduced and been considered. Hearing, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Moving to ordinance sixteen dash eleven, a traffic ordinance, and it will be presented and covered by Jeremy Waller. Jeremy, welcome.
Good evening, councilors, mayors. For you tonight for adoption consideration is ordinance sixteen dash eleven. It's a track, our annual traffic ordinance modification. Can I borrow that mouse?
I just gave it away.
Okay.
It's our mouse. You gave the mouse and you didn't take it for it.
This is a standard traffic update to incorporate our new roadways. As you know, we're quickly developing, and we acquire new public right-of-way on a regular basis. So, this ordinance revision will incorporate all new changes since the last time. Two notable differences that are worth mentioning are the addition of, or the modification of the intersection of Rose Moss Crossing and Columbine Lane. This is currently a one-way stop heading south, teeing into Columbine. The HOA reached out to us a few months back to, with the request to incorporate a three-way stop here because of the increased pedestrian movement at this intersection. The community area, the pool and tennis courts and park and things are in this area, so there are a significant amount of children that walk across this intersection. We evaluated internally and thought it was a good idea, so that revision is a part of this traffic ordinance as well. Also, the incorporation of Park Street being a one-way from Parkway Circle, heading to the east to the Mill Street project. As you know, there's many restaurants in this area, lots of pedestrian traffic. It's only gonna increase over time as additional restaurants open up. We are changing the traffic ordinance at this time. However, the actual implementation won't happen until this intersection here is reconstructed as a part of that Mill Street project. Initially introduced, it was from Poplar Street heading east. A resident reached out and brought to our attention the amount of wreckers and large trucks that access Estler's and this logo shop back here. We took a look at that and agreed that it was probably best that this movement be two-way. So, when we initially implement, it'll be one-way from here, heading down, which will create that pedestrian safety we're looking for, and then it will stay a full-way, two-way road from here to Poplar to discourage large trucks from going downtown, as well as just to, you know, create a little safer pathway through that area. So, those are the major changes that we're proposing. At this time, I'd offer to answer any questions you might have.
This is up for adoption consideration this evening. Is there a motion, please?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance sixteen eleven as stated.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. You're all official.
Thank you.
While you're here, would you mind sharing with us some details on the update from the Union Street Extension Project?
Yes, this, we've been working on this project for a couple of years now. It has had various names. Initially, it was the West Access Road, and then it was the Union Street Extension. Through that process, we identified that it is probably most logically the Westfield Boulevard Extension, Union Street south of One Hundred and Sixty-first Street as Westfield Boulevard. Ultimately, this will go north and wind around and tie in to Thirty-two at the Poplar Roundabout. We have gone through design to a hundred percent. A few things that we encountered during that design process is working with Target to get access to their truck dock. So, we will, we worked with them to create a better entry into their store, as well as create the secondary entrance for trucks. It'll take those trucks largely off of this Hundred and Fifty-first Street eventually. So, that was one of our hurdles. Also, land acquisition is mostly wrapped up. We have a couple parcels that are outstanding. Brian and my team are working through the details of that. With that said, we do have ride of entries for all of those as we move through the acquisition process. So, in other words, we can continue our plan of construction. So far, we've, clearing is done. We are actively relocating utilities and hope to go to bid here in the next couple of weeks for construction of this project. It is about a nine-month, nine to twelve-month, depending on what, when we get started and how that hits winter, to finish the project completely, which includes a sixty-day closure of Hundred and Fifty-first Street at where it ties in for the construction of this roundabout. With that said, we will construct this piece up here first to create an access for trucks into the Target area. Additionally, there will be a connection along Hundred and Fifty-first Street to the Monon Trail, so we'll have trail connectivity up through there. And then this intersection where Greyhound Pass and Hundred and Fifty-first Street come together will get reconstructed to make the east-west movement, the free-flowing movement, and then Greyhound Pass will actually tee into Hundred and Fifty-first Street with a stop control there. This has been a very confusing, difficult intersection for a long time. This project takes care of that. I think that's all I have, unless you were to have some questions about that, and I'm happy to answer.
I have an observation on the name. As I was commuting from my day job up here tonight.
Yeah.
I noticed on our bridge that state had already put up signs that we were going over Union Street on that bridge.
Yeah.
Not Westfield Boulevard.
Not Westfield Boulevard. We'll look into that. We're still closing out that Thirty-one project, and we'll see if we can't get that.
It's the first time I've seen the sign. I don't know if it just went up today, or if it's just the first time.
When indot was designed in Thirty-one, it was, we were still calling it Union Street at that time, so it likely got into the sign program early, and we'll get that taken care of.
When it's finished, heading eastbound on Hundred and Fifty-first, if you were wanting to enter into the Target.
Mm-hmm.
How do you do that?
So, as a part of this, right now, Target has a full access right here and a right-in right here. Part of our project is to eliminate this right-in, right-out, and put a full access closer down in between Thirty-one and where the roundabout will be to create a better entrance for them. In talking to Target, they like the, to enter directly in front of the doors. That's a retail requirement or request. So, that was part of that negotiation. We were working it all out. The city will construct a full-access entrance right here to create a safer location because initially it was gonna be here, which creates stacking into the roundabout, so we moved that further to the east.
So, basically, both the curb cuts on Hundred and Fifty-first will be changed into one.
Correct.
In the middle of it, basically.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any others?
Any others? Thank you, Jeremy.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That completes our items under old business. We'll move on to new business, and the first item is ordinance sixteen dash thirteen, Bridgewater PUD District Amendment, parcel M-three, presented by Kevin Todd. Welcome, Kevin.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. For the record, Kevin Todd with the Economic and Community Development Department. This item before you this evening for introduction is an amendment to the Bridgewater PUD. Specifically, this item, this area is located at the northwest corner of Gray Road and Radrick Drive, just south of the second phase of the Bridgewater Apartments. The request is to modify some of the development standards to allow for nine-by-eighteen parking, which is consistent with the city's UDO, to reduce some landscaping requirements and to allow additional tenant signage on the property. Public hearing is scheduled for the July fifth Advisory Plan Commission meeting, and will be back before you for adoption consideration at a later date. With me this evening is petitioner, and I believe they'd like to make a brief presentation or at least introduce themselves, following their comments. I'm available for any questions that you may have of me.
Good evening. My name is Rick Thomason. I'm the architect for a proposed ten-thousand-square-foot professional office building, and on approximately one-point-four acres in the location that Kevin indicated. We will ask for three text amendments with this project, essentially variances. It's a unique site in that it has three front yards, and with the three front yards comes a lot of landscaping requirements and things like that. So, the three things that we would like to point out are parking. In a ten-thousand-square-foot professional office building, thirty-three spaces are required. At this point, we have twenty percent of the building leased, and we would like to leave as many spaces as we can for potentially even medical uses, that type of thing. The plan that we show have fifty-five spaces, and we are encroaching on a couple of the front yards on the east and west side to get that done. It added a significant amount of spaces, approximately fifteen spaces, in order for us to do that. We're about five feet, I believe, into the yards on each side. But we still have allowed landscaping space. Like I say, with three front yards, that's a pretty significant amount of landscaping. We've reduced the landscaping, although you can still see that there's a significant amount of landscaping. We've reduced the landscaping in order to, actually, our landscape architect told us he didn't have space to put it on there. There are a significant amount of easements and things along the east side which are not usable for the landscaping. And then we have a big monument sign on the corner that's existing that the Bridgewater Apartments, and I'll get to that in a moment. But to put trees in front of that would defeat the purpose of that monument sign. We still have the shrubbery that's required along the edges of the parking for the screening, and so I believe our landscaping plan is still very significant, even though it falls short of what three front yards will require. Our third item is signage. At the suggestion of Dave Mennel, who's the Bridgewater person in charge, he suggested that we amend the existing monument sign that's at the corner there. It's a pretty significant monument sign. Right now, it just has Bridgewater Apartments on it, but we will amend it to go as high as fifteen feet to provide some backlighting to it. I believe we had the picture of a sample there. And to make it a tasteful item, it's, it will be modeled after the signage that's at Hundred and Forty-sixth and Kerry Road, that is, there's a Rikers Gas Station there that I think they went through the same process for. It'll be modeled similar to that, although it won't obviously have the rotating numbers and things on it. That is the scheme that we will go with, with a backlit signage. On the building, in lieu of what Bridgewater requires, we would like to go with the standards that are what Westfield requires. We would like to provide lighted channel letters for the tenant, for the signage on the tenant building. So, that would be a change versus the restrictions. And again, this is at the suggestion of Dave Mennel, to provide the channel letters, the lighted channel letters, within the requirements of what Westfield has, I believe, twenty-inch total height, that type of thing. Are there questions? Those are the three amendments that we will ask for.
Any questions from the council? This is council introduction tonight, scheduled for APC hearing on July fifth.
And you will have a neighborhood meeting prior?
We will. We'll schedule that within the next couple of days.
Without any objections, we'll move this along.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to ordinance sixteen dash nineteen, Big Hoffa PUD, presented by Amanda Rubidoo. Welcome.
Hello. Good evening, President, members of the council. For the record, my name is Amanda Rubidoo with the Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening for introduction is a proposal to rezone approximately two-point-six-six acres from the SF-three district to a PUD district. For your reference, the parcels that would be included in this PUD are located on the northeast corner of State Road Thirty-two and East Street within the Grand Junction sub-district. This request would accommodate the relocation and expansion of Big Hoffa's restaurant and their related parking. While a restaurant is not currently permitted within the SF-three district, it is a contemplated use in our comprehensive plan as part of the recently approved Grand Junction sub-district addendum. Tonight is an introduction, and the proposal will follow the normal zoning process. It is scheduled for a public hearing at the Plan Commission meeting on July fifth. If all goes according to plan, this item could be back before you as early as the August eighth meeting. Birch Dalton with Edge Rock Development is here on behalf of the petitioner and would like to make a presentation. After the presentation, the petitioner and staff are available as well, should the council have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Good evening, councilors, mayor, Ms. Mayor. That seat's never had such an academic achievement. For those that don't know, Big Hoffa, it's the best barbecue, not only in Westfield, but as far as we're concerned, in the Midwest. And Adam Hoffman's here in the crowd tonight, here supporting his request, and you'll see why the elevations, he's making a significant investment in our city. And I think it sets a nice edge to the east side of Thirty-two. This is a daytime elevation. He's going with a timber package along with some very nice stone. If we can go back to the site plan, I'll, go ahead. Another elevation. But the site plan, I think, it's important to understand, there's five parcels here being rezoned, and they're owned by Frank Con FMH Partnership. Mr. Hoffman's purchasing three out of the five. When I was asked to get involved, I suggested that they zone all five parcels to have potential future access to Hillcrest, if you see it coming down off the parking. I've met with a couple of the neighbors, and we're gonna have a meeting this Thursday night at the library, and went out certified mail for our public notice, but we'll have a neighborhood meeting, and I'll be able to collect some feedback this Thursday night at the library. But if you look, the roundabout, the suggested roundabout was provided by staff, and we're providing the appropriate ground easement for that. So, we planned the building around the future roundabout for East Street. So, going back to illustrations now, wait, is there any questions on the site plan, you know, the parking or anything? If not, we'll go back to elevations. And you can see that we're providing, that is your East Street entrance there, and then on the north side, you're gonna have outdoor seating and outdoor eating out there. So, we're gonna approximately have about six thousand square feet of restaurant area. Also, he's gonna run his catering kitchen out of this, so it no only adds a beautiful building to Thirty-two, a lot of employment's gonna come with this as he expands his operation. For example, he got a call in the last day to provide seven hundred catering meal for seven hundred on Friday, and he supplies it out of his current location. So, I think with the community support counselor's approval, this restaurant will only improve, you know, that side of Thirty-two and add to the employment. Is there any questions at this time?
Birch, why do you have, the underlying zoning is GB and not LB?
Well, in the ordinance, the staff and I, you know, that was a suggestion I had there, and we put it in it. I mean, if there's a preference to the actual zoning, I'm just, I'm worried about the restaurant and future development on Hillcrest Corner. So, you know, I'm willing to look at anything that makes sense.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
This is a council introduction, scheduled for APC public hearing on July fifth. Without objection, it will be moved along through the process. Thank you. Moving to ordinance sixteen dash twenty-three, Liberty Ridge PUD, presented by Kevin Todd.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Again, for the record, Kevin Todd with the Economic and Community Development Department. This item before you is a, for introduction, is a new planning and development called the Liberty Ridge Planning and Development. The sixty-acre property is located on the south side of Hundred and Fifty-first Street, just east of Town Road, and is currently zoned AG SF-one. The request is to rezone the property to allow a residential subdivision with a maximum of one-hundred-and-twenty-three single-family properties. The public hearing for this item is scheduled for the July fifth Advisory Plan Commission meeting, and will return to you following the Plan Commission process for adoption consideration at a later date. The petitioner's representative, Mr. John Davishawitz, is here this evening and would like to make a brief presentation, following his comments. I'm available for any questions that you may have of staff.
Good evening. For the record, my name is John Davishawitz. I'm a land use professional with Nelson &amp; Frankenberger. We're here this evening on behalf of CalAtlantic Homes, and with CalAtlantic is Keith Lash. Jim Schinner, our attorney with our office, is also present. I just wanted to take a minute of the council's time to review the site location and ask Kevin to put up the exhibit that's now on display. We've also forwarded the council a color landscape exhibit of the proposed subdivision development. Along the north side of the perimeter of the site is Hundred and Fifty-first Street. Along the north side of the perimeter of the site is 151st Street. To the west is Town Road. As many of the council members and those on the Plan Commission are aware, Central Christian Church has recently received approval to construct a new building on the 20 acres immediately to the east of this property, and they're the owner of the subject 60 acres, which is the nature of the petition for consideration this evening. This is a current zoning map, and we've identified on that current zoning map the location of Central Christian Church. To the south of the real estate is the approved Town West PUD. That's a PUD that includes both commercial and multifamily uses. To the north and to the east of our side is the Harmony Development, and we've identified on the map as well these parcels that are currently zoned by BCE, a development interest within the area. And we've taken the final exhibit to show our site in proximity to the surrounding approved uses, those being Central Christian Church to the west, to the south, you can see the commercial development, multifamily and assisted living along our south and east perimeter of the site. Kevin, are you able to put up the color site exhibit? Is that possible? That color exhibit isn't in the ordinance. But as Steph indicated, the site consists of 123 single-family lots for individual detached dwellings. The anticipated average sale price is approximately $350,000. Significant attention has been made to preserve natural areas, including wetlands on the site, as well as provide buffers between our site, which aren't required today, but between our site and the commercial development to the south and the multifamily development to our east. Along the street frontage perimeter, we have a proposal for significant landscaping. We have met with the conservancy group and received comments from them, which we will incorporate any changes after we receive comments from the council as well as Plan Commission. We have a neighborhood meeting that's anticipated for June 29th in advance of the Plan Commission public hearing, which is anticipated on July 5th. At this time, we'd be glad to take the comments that the council members may have. We'll continue to reach out and meet with council members between now and the public hearing, so that after the public hearing on July 5th, we'll be prepared to make adjustments and modifications to the ordinance to address those concerns that we've received to date in advance of coming back in front of the Plan Commission at a later date after July 5th, with anticipation of receiving a recommendation back to the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. As outlined, this is council introduction. As mentioned, public hearing scheduled for July 5th. Are there any comments from the council before moving this along?
Well, I do, but I'll get in touch with you later on some of it, but I do know that the group, the conservancy group, is very interested in this project and is hoping that some of the goals outlined in the draft conservancy can be reflected in this.
Without objections, we'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, there are a few items all relating to the annual matters of real property tax abatement and/or personal property tax abatement, and I'm going to ask Kevin Todd to make these presentations. And by requirement, we're going to have to take these individually, but just walk us through these as efficiently as we can, and we'll take them.
Certainly.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you again for the record, Kevin Todd, Economic and Community Development Department. The first two items, if it's okay, I'd like to present them together. And then, as mentioned, you would need to take action on them separately. But these two items are for, the first one is for a real property tax abatement under Resolution 16-112, and for a personal property abatement under Resolution 16-113. These requests are by automatic pool covers. The applicant is seeking a 10-year real property abatement for a $3.4 million building addition project and a five-year personal property tax abatement for a $607,000 value of new manufacturing machinery and equipment. In return for the abatement, Automatic Pool Covers is committing to retaining the 49 existing jobs that they have today, totaling nearly $3.2 million in annual salaries and an additional 47 new jobs totaling $2.4 million in new salaries. These items are eligible for adoption consideration this evening. Ms. Katie Culp, representing the petitioner, is here this evening, and I believe I'd like to say a few words following her comments. I'm available for any questions that you may have of staff. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katie Culp. I am president of KSM Location Advisors, which is a division of Katz Sapper &amp; Miller, the accounting firm. Appreciate your time here tonight, and Kevin did such an amazing job going through all the stats. I won't bore you with them again, but this is Automatic Pool Covers, and Michael Shebeck, the president, is here tonight, and I know he wanted to express some gratitude and say a few words, but just wanted to thank you for your consideration. This potential project represents a potential expansion and almost doubling of the current workforce here in Westfield. I was lucky enough to help Mr. Shebeck, gosh, many years ago, when he moved first from Fishers to Westfield, and I think this is a great example of success that real and personal property tax abatement can support and foster. I know the economics of an expansion are critically, you know, the numbers are tight, and it's difficult to invest in this type of expansion, and there have been some competitive pressures looking at the West Coast. So your team with Mayor Cook and with Matt and Kevin and Amanda have done an outstanding job of helping us through this process. I do want to point out that this tax abatement is a piece of it. We're still finalizing some matters with the state of Indiana and expect to have those finalized in the next week or so. So it's kind of a whole package deal, but appreciate your consideration, and I'm certainly available to answer any questions you may have. I know Michael wanted to say a few words as well.
Counsel, hello, mayor. Very grateful to be a Westfield business and help grow the business and the city as we have in the last three to four years since moving up here in 2012. Everything that we have promised, we've exceeded, and I think that the expectations of what this growth can look like are very achievable and excedible, but we like to stay conservative in our estimates. So I appreciate the opportunity. Westfield is a great, great city, and I'm just very grateful to be a part of it. Any questions?
These items are up for adoption consideration tonight. I would entertain a motion on 16-112, please.
So moved.
Motion, second, please.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
I would like to ask a couple of questions, Kevin. How many properties do we have that are tax abated in the community at this time?
Yeah, as one of the slides on the upcoming, one of the upcoming items, this will be the
Are all granted 10-year abatements?
That's the common abatement terms for real property abatements.
And just as a what-if, what if the terms in here are not met or exceeded? Is there any review of the abatement?
There is, and we'll see that upcoming. There's an annual review that the council has to perform. The abatement recipient submits a form every year indicating where they are along their journey. They'll report their employment numbers and their salary numbers, their assessed value numbers, and every year, the council gets to decide if this is something we want to continue doing or not for that property.
And a 100% abatement on this project in the first year is how much in savings?
I don't have that number in front of me. We don't have it. We can get that for you, but we don't have that tonight.
I don't have, didn't do this in my head, but assuming a $3.00 tax rate, which we're below, but assuming a $3.00 commercial tax rate on the assessed value of what? What was the assessed value on this?
Yeah, it was 3.4 million improvement.
So $100,000 in tax savings?
Yeah.
Will be the approximate number, and then knocking off 10,000 a year for each year going down?
Yeah, roughly. Yeah, that's right. The total over the 10-year period is a little over $400,000.
Hello again. I just wanted to add, I apologize, I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me, but I know as I was chatting with Mr. Skelton last week about this, I think it was about $78,000 or $80,000 a year was the 100% abatement on building we were anticipating. But one thing I wanted to mention that I had chatted with Matt about last week is while this 10-year traditional schedule is pretty standard, especially across the suburban markets in this metro area, a couple of years ago, the state legislature made a change to allow up to 100% abatement of total taxes each year for up to a 10-year period. So instead of that phasing from 100% down to 90, 80, and so forth, the city councils are permitted to consider up to 100% of abatement for each of those years. And so I just wanted to mention that. We're seeing a trend. I know Fishers has done it, Noblesville, Lebanon, and Zionsville, I believe, and Whitestown. So there are some other communities in the area who are considering it. So I know it's a very important decision and one you all weigh very carefully as you contemplate what to support new and existing and growing businesses with, but I did just want to point out that there is an even more aggressive alternative that your capable city staff cut us, shot us down right away when we entertained it with them. So just wanted to add that. Thanks.
And as a note, item 16-116 is the annual compliance review, which is part of the process, so when we get down to that one, we'll go through that. I would mention also that of the 11 or so that we have, some will be dropping off soon. Is that correct, Kevin?
Yeah, over the next couple of years, we'll be, two or three of them will be falling off, will be burning off, so.
Yeah, we're close to the end on a couple, right? Okay. All right, there's a motion on the floor for 16-112. All in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, same sign. Thank you. Let's move to 16-113. It's for the personal property rather than the real property. Is there a motion, please?
Move to approved Resolution 16-113.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, moving to 16-114 and 115. Kevin, you can take those together, and then we'll vote separately. Is that correct?
Well, this one I'd like to do separately since there's slightly different
Fine.
issues with them.
Got it.
I'll be brief. The first one, Resolution 16-114, is a personal property abatement request by Durmark Technologies. The applicant is seeking a five-year personal property tax abatement for $1.9 million of new production equipment. In return for the abatement, Durmark would commit to retaining the 45 existing jobs, totaling $3.2 million in annual salaries, and an additional 18 new jobs totaling $810,000 in salaries over the life of the abatement. This item is eligible for adoption consideration this evening. Ms. Jenny Macy and Bill Busick with Durmark are here this evening and are available to answer any questions that you may have of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council before we take action? Adoption consideration, is there a motion, please? This is on item 16-114 only.
Move to approved Resolution 16-114.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ake. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. 16-115 is a resolution amending a previous abatement resolution from last year, Resolution 15-127, that the council approved last October. Since October, the company realized that they reported corporate-wide job and salary numbers on the accompanying statement of benefits form rather than local numbers. So as a result, they would just simply like to update and correct their SB1 form with the correct numbers that are presented this evening under this resolution. Mechanically, this resolution would then replace and repeal, repeal and replace the previous resolution from 2015. The applicant's requesting a 10-year abatement for $2.1 million building project. In return for the abatement, Durmark Technologies would commit to retaining again their 22 existing jobs totaling over, just over $1 million in annual salaries and additional 41 new jobs totaling nearly $2.7 million in salaries over the life of the abatement. Again, this item is eligible for adoption consideration this evening, and the petitioner is here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. This is up for adoption consideration. Is there a motion, please?
Move to approved Resolution 16-115.
Thank you, Mr. Hoover. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Horkey. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Moving to 16-116, this is the annual compliance review, correct?
Yeah, thank you. This is the last item for me this evening for your consideration by Resolution 16-116, the annual tax abatement compliance review as required by the Indiana Code. Every year, each abatement recipient, as mentioned earlier this evening, is required to submit compliance forms to the city in order to confirm progress towards the benchmarks that were established and contemplated when the abatement was originally awarded. Tonight, the council will need to determine substantial compliance with the statement of benefits from the real property tax abatement approved for AgriLiant Genetics under Resolution 15-104. When we reviewed the city's other 10 abatements for compliance in April, we reported that AgriLiant abatement was not yet active because a full assessment of the improvements had not yet been performed. Well, shortly after that April meeting, we were notified by the county that the AgriLiant improvements have been assessed, and they are now eligible to begin their abatement period and file for this compliance this evening. As a result, AgriLiant has filed their compliance form for your review and consideration. After adding nine jobs and over $1 million in salaries since the approval of their abatement, they are on a favorable trend towards reaching their projections at the end of their abatement period. Again, this resolution is before you for adoption consideration this evening, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion on adoption for this Resolution 16-116, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Horkey. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ake. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, same sign. Thank you. That concludes that portion, and we will move to ordinance 16-17, to establish an economic authority. Brian?
Yes, sir. Ordinance 16-17 is before you to initiate and create a redevelopment authority. Redevelopment Authority is an entity set up by statute to work with a redevelopment commission, much the same way that a building corporation would work with other municipalities. the same way that a building corporation would work with other municipal corporations. This is set up to be reviewed by you, questions answered, information received, and hopefully adopted at our next meeting.
Thank you. This is a
Just an introduction.
Introduction tonight. There will be discussions, any questions answered, but it will not be returned to us until at least June 27th. Unless there are any questions right this minute on this resolution, we'll leave it on the table and reconsider it between now and June 27th. Thank you. Moving forward, we have ordinance 16-18, alcohol beverage permits presented by Matt Skelton. Mr. Skelton?
Think I'll do that real quickly since Matt's out there. This ordinance is in relation to newly passed legislation which allows the city of Westfield to have four additional liquor licenses. This ordinance would allow the creation of a committee to review those applicants requesting those alcohol beverage permits by either creating one by yourselves or one appointed by the mayor, the structure of which is not set out, and that's the few questions I have about this. But what it does allow is allows the city to get in between the persons requesting those permits and the authority that grants those permits to, to put certain restrictions and requirements on them. Attached to, excuse me, attached to the ordinance are the forms and applications that we anticipate being used by the applicants. The screening would be done by this aforementioned body I talked about, which has not been formed nor has been really dealt with, and those are the questions I've, I've received from you folks regarding the formation. This is just an introduction. The formation of the committee and the rest of the questions can be answered before the next anticipated meeting on June 27th.
Thank you. Any immediate questions from the council? This will be up for consideration between now and the 27th.
I would like to offer a comment. In reviewing this, since there is a committee that needs to be established, I would hope, especially because I think there's going to be quite a bit of people interested in obtaining one of these, and I believe we need to be equitable, and it'd be nice to have a representative body looking at this instead of just, just one group or one staff member. I think we need to look at that makeup of the committee as an important.
I think it was anticipated that some group that would be subject to public meeting laws would be appointed either by the mayor, including members of the staff, perhaps a council, citizens, however. It just wasn't spelled out, and it's a little hard to create something without having the feedback from the authority that's adopting the ordinance. So it's been introduced as it is with those tight, those ends tightened up before it comes back to you in two weeks.
Thank you. How does a, if I'm looking for a liquor license, how would I determine, I mean, what would make me go this route for one of these four versus the normal procedure or just, I mean, would, can you apply for both and see which one you get? I don't, I don't know that much about liquor licenses.
Liquor licenses are limited by the population in the area where they're going to be located. These are four additional ones that go beyond, beyond and above the normal calculations based on population.
Do you know if, if our current, if we have exhausted our current liquor licenses that would be available by population, will that go up as our new census numbers come in?
It'll go up with the new census numbers. This was part of the legislation that we were able to get through this, this past session because of the high demand in our industry of hospitality for liquor licenses. We've got the hotels coming in, we've got a lot of restaurants. So we were able to, to get some, some extra permits right out of the legislature. So, and that's the requirements they put on it. So over the next couple of weeks, if you would consider how you would like that council group made up.
Please note too, that it's restricted to the Grand Junction Economic Development Area, and now that the legislation's been adopted, if we don't create this entity, the people who want the permits will work directly with the state alcohol bureau and bypass our input and control.
So the, whether we establish this or not, those four licenses will be available?
Yes, sir.
This gives us an opportunity to influence or help choose where they go.
Any other questions? All right, this will come back for our adoption on the 27th. Thank you. Ordinance 16-21, allocate LOAT funds and create a, an additional fund category. Brian?
Yes, sir. As you know, we receive some LOAT funds, and the clerk treasurer has requested that this ordinance be reviewed and adopted pursuant to the allocations that are contained therein, in which 25% of the amounts we received from LOAT would go into the rainy day fund, number 403, and 75% deposited into a LOAT fund, 257, which you're also creating by this ordinance. It's nothing more than a bookkeeping issue, number one, to create the fund, the holding LOAT funds, and two, the allocation of 25% to the rainy day. Clerks requested that this be considered. This is an introduction. Can answer any questions as well as she before this is considered and perhaps adopted in two weeks.
Thank you. Any questions immediate for the, from council? This will be open for discussion between now and the 27th. That's first opportunity for adoption. Thank you. Moving on, we will consider ordinance 16-21. As I mentioned earlier, 16-117 has been withdrawn, so we will go to 16-22, establishing an internal control.
Sorry. This ordinance is before you pursuant to some legislation, legislation adopted by the state requiring internal controls in all municipalities. This is primarily a response to municipalities that do not control, think policies, of persons who handle money within the municipality. It's an attempt to put in, to place those redundant responsibilities and oversights so that money is handled on a more professional basis. You also note there's a materiality threshold, which we've included at $1,000, which means anything above and beyond that is going to be applying, applying to these kind of controls. Attached is the, I hope it's attached. Let me check. Yes, is the state issued mandates that require this minimum level of internal controls. This ordinance must be in place before July 1st. This is the introduction with the anticipated adoption at our next meeting in two weeks.
Thank you. For, just for clarification sakes, this is an introduction. This is, this is our first attempt, obviously.
Yes.
Since this is new legislation brought forth by the state. So I just want to, to point out that may, in the future, we may end up modifying this to a bit. But this is our introduction at this point. We may see some changes coming as we learn how to use this.
Yes, sir, absolutely. This makes us compliant with the requirements of the statute.
Correct, thank you, right. Okay, this is an introduction tonight. There will be probably ongoing discussion, and we will look for adoption consideration on the 27th.
Can I offer just, just a comment? In the document, in the resolution, we say Exhibit A, and the only part attached is the Part One Minimum Level of Internal Control. I'm guessing that is the Exhibit A? That we're just incorporating that? There, there's nothing further, right? Okay. I think we need to label it Exhibit A just for clarification.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our items under the normal agenda for this evening. At this time, I would open the, I would open the mic for any comments from the city councils, councillors. Anybody have anything?
I'd like to give an update. On last Monday, June 6th, Advisory Plan Commission, we had about a three-hour meeting. The items that, which acted on and took input on were as follows. A development plan for IU Health at Spring Mill Station was approved after several modifications to the building in particular. The Bent Creek Development Plan and Secondary Platte was approved. The development plan for Westfield Business Center, which is a large building on Oak Ridge Road, kind of a spec office or other use building, was approved. Circle K Gas Station Development Plan and Convenience Store was approved at 31 and 151th Street. Had site plan, or Secondary Platte and Development Plan for Harmony Mixed Use District was approved. The Retreat on the Monon Secondary Platte Development Plans were approved. Had public hearings, we held public hearings on four items. Open Doors PUD, the Urban Vines Development Plan on 161st Street, Harmony PUD District Amendment, the Mixed Use District, PUD for that, and a development plan for CVS in that Harmony Mixed Use District.
Is that it?
That was it. Well, it took three hours.
It definitely took three hours.
Anything you'd like, anything you'd like to add to that?
Oh, he did a really good job. The one item garnered 24 public comments by my count, and we've gotten about a hundred.
I hear you very well.
Say, the one item got 24 public comments and about 150 emails, so it's got a ways to go, but it's good to see the public involvement paying attention.
Any other comments? I would bring it to the attention of the council and the community that on Saturday morning, this past Saturday morning, we met out at the event center in the front and took the opportunity to kind of commemorate the time a bit and acknowledge some people and prepared, and we will be burying a time capsule in front of the, I'm sure that Ms. Mayor or Mr. Mayor may, may bring that up as a point as well. I, I found it interesting that we had some nice business and public residents and sofa sponsoring. One of them, we had a really nice hole in the ground with a blanket around it, and one of our sponsors was Flanner.
God worried me because one of our sponsors was Flanner and Buchanan.
Yeah.
And I didn't know.
Looked like we were gonna get thrown in the hole.
Was for me or for the time capsule?
So let it be known that the plan is in 30 years. For those of us that are here, we'll open that.
Yeah, we'll be here.
Okay, there you go.
I'll make calendar entries right now.
So now I will turn it over to Ms. Mayor.
And how would you, you wanna, you wanna address your, your council yet tonight? She's just kind of giggling, so I, I often look at them and giggle too, Cory. It's all right. Yeah. Tell them that they did a good job tonight.
You did a good job.
Thank you.
They didn't mess anything up.
Thank you so much. You did a good job as well.
They didn't mess the votes up, or we didn't have to recount them or anything, did we? Good, good. Cory, thank you for being here. Lot of fun. Off to intermediate school. Keep the straight A's, right? I'll, I will check because I know where you live. Okay? All right. Hey, Economic Community Development has a new employee. Ladies and gentlemen, meet Matt Pleasant right here. Stand up. Hey, Matt. I don't know if he was expecting that. You'll see him performing in the months to come. I'm sure Matt, how many Matts? Two of you now? Yeah, okay. So Matt, you will have young Matt presenting. I'm sure some of those coming up. So that's, good to have you with us, Matt. You covered the, the time capsule. That was, it was very impressive, the different items that were presented by the groups and the schools and some of the businesses and all. So that'll be, that'll be fun to bury. Watch this weekend, the Westfield Parks is putting on the Follow the Drinking Gourd. This has nothing to do with the liquor permits that you were just asked to, to work with. This is a production between Westfield Parks and Main Street Productions, and it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and I'm sure Melody will be glad to help anybody that wants tickets. We're glad to see that. It's kind of a neat summer piece. You know, we had a very near tragedy out at Grand Park just a couple of weeks ago. I'm sure most of you've heard about that with a 13-year-old young man from Carmel was struck in the chest not by a hit ball, but by an unanticipated thrown ball from his own catcher, and the young man caught it in exactly the wrong place, fell to the ground, his heart actually stopped. Thank you to some, some quick reaction on some people on the scene. They remembered seeing the defibrillators, the AED sign that is on all of the concession stands, and a member got that attached right away. Within two or three minutes, two of our officers were, were there who were patrolling the site. Officer, one of our newer fellows, Tyler Doherty, and Josh Harrell, who's been with us a while, were there within a couple, three minutes and took over the CPR. Our first, second responders in this case, when the rest of our fire people got there and took over, we weren't sure how this one was going to end, but I'm, I'm happy to say that the young man is home and doing fine. I understand there's no, no, no complications, but I really want to thank our public safety people, police and fire, especially the young Tyler Doherty who stepped up and literally saved this young guy's life. So something I think we can all be proud of here and that, hey, these things are gonna happen out there in that big place, and we've been planning for these kind of occasions, and this one came off well, so.
Thank you. That does conclude our business for this evening. I would remind the councillors, we have some documents to sign. Without objection, we will stand adjourned.
Hit it again.